Hello and welcome to the Beaumont City Council At-Large Candidate Forum, streaming on 12 News Plus. I'm Mark Armstrong, your moderator for today's discussion. And we're here at the 12 News studio in Beaumont to provide residents with an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates vying for the two at-large seats on Beaumont City Council before the election on May 3rd. Let's go ahead and begin by introducing our candidates. We have Odwin Samuel. He is the current Ward 3 Councilmember running for an at-large seat. We also have Brian Navoe. He is a local consultant and civic volunteer. Mike Williams, he is a Beaumont businessman and community advocate. And finally, we have A.J. Turner, Councilman A.J. Turner, the incumbent at-large councilmember seeking reelection. Thank you all for joining us here today. All right, well, before we begin, let's go over the format and rules for today's forum. Each candidate will be asked a series of questions on topics pertinent to Beaumont's future. Candidates are all going to have one minute to respond to each question, and if necessary, I may ask follow-up questions for clarification. Time limits are going to be strictly enforced to ensure fairness. If time permits, we will conclude with a lightning round featuring brief personal questions. Finally, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. So let's go ahead and proceed to the questions, gentlemen. All right, two years ago, the city launched a $123 million five-year plan to overhaul its aging water infrastructure, including the replacement of water lines. Now, given the urgency to prevent potential water supply issues, how would you ensure that this plan continues to be executed effectively and on schedule? We're going to start with Mr. Samuel.
One, I'd make sure our departments are adequately staffed, and we have individuals that are continuing to do the maintenance on our water system. So that's essentially what needs to be done. As we begin to spend the money, budget for it, we spent over $40 million for water and sewer. So we are putting our money in advancements in our water systems.
Mr. Williams, same question.
Yeah, I think that across the city, that there are infrastructure that's being replaced, but there are still areas that are problem areas that probably have gone unchecked for some time. So I think it's important that, it's great that it's being addressed, but I think it's important that we continue to address areas of urgency that aren't getting looked at or underserved, and make sure that we're looking at these infrastructure needs and problems across the city.
Okay. Mr. Navoe, same question.
I think it's great, since we had the storm and our pump station got knocked out for days, and we all know about that. So it's good that we've got the amount of money going in to the places that it's needed. We still have, you know, obviously, issues with the sewage. I'd like to see that taken care of quickly. We just need to ensure that we have adequate staff, that they're paid well, that they can get the job done on a timely manner, and we have good oversight from our department heads and good leadership from our city manager to get this taken care of.
Councilman Turner, final one on this question.
I think it's extremely important that you stated that we actually have a plan, because in the past, I think we have failed the plan, and now we actually have a plan in place that we can implement and track the success of the plan. It's extremely important to note that we have CARES Act funding this year, and $29 million out of that, $32 million, we put it solely towards sewer and drainage, because that was a need and a want of the citizens in the community of Beaumont. It's important that we understand the process. When we have an issue with sewer and drainage, it's important you call 311, because that's how we track the data in the high-problem areas, so we can prioritize what we need to focus on. So it's important our citizens know, there's nothing wrong with contacting your council members as well as social media, but it's extremely important to follow the process and contact 311, so we can track, analyze, and make sure we're following up on the high-problem areas. The city has put the most money in the history of Beaumont in sewer and drainage, and we got so much more work to do.
All right. Moving on to question three, and we're going to start off with Mr. Williams, and just go right down the same order there. Three years ago, still talking about water, there were major public outcry about brown and discolored drinking water. You all remember that. Fast forward to today, and the city's public GIS map shows that there has been more than a dozen calls to 311 for brown water in just the past 30 days, and there's currently four dozen open requests for water main leaks. So at this point, do you think this is still a major issue for our city? And what would you do to further improve the quality of our drinking water? We'll start with you, Mr. Williams.
You know, I mean, it's still a major issue if you're getting calls and requests. I mean, I think if, you know, a single person is seeing brown water, or if there's a water leak, it needs to be addressed. That's an issue, whether it's one person, 12 people, or 100 people. Whenever something like that comes up, it's important that it's addressed and handled with proactive measures. And so, yeah, I think it kind of falls into the overall thought of, you know, proactive approach to infrastructure and upgrades and maintenance, and to limit it to where, you know, there's a point in time where that number's even lower.
Mr. Navoe, your response.
I can tell you that it's dropped significantly. I used to see the posts on Facebook and, you know, hear it on the news. So we get our water out of the Nature's River, and there's a lot of manganese and other, was it iron and minerals that are pumped through, and they settle in the bottom of the pipes, and then when we have turbulence through there, it'll go into your lines. And so they have been doing water flushing and bleeding of the lines, and that does help, but we're never going to completely get rid of it because of our water source. But we can make a difference as far as continuing to bleed the lines out through the fire hydrants, which you can see. So obviously, the infrastructure, $123 million, we're putting through there with additional lines, will make a difference in cutting that out, because it'll keep a continuous flow through the system to where it doesn't get stagnant and build up.
Councilman Turner, what are your thoughts on brown water in our drinking system?
I don't support having brown water in any drinking system under any circumstances. Prior to my first year in council, I had a person who led staff who said it's perfectly fine to have brown water in the city, and that person is no longer in leadership due to the fact that that's something I do not support nor I will stand for. Now the city has aggressive planning. Though it's aggressive planning, and we're making progress, and the calls have reduced significantly, the issue is, we have to have a directional flushing plan. And now we do have a directional flushing plan, and we have over 800 miles of sewer and drainage. That's basically from Beaumont all the way to New Mexico. So understand, we have a lot of drainage and sewer that has been not really focused on in the past, but we now have focused on it as a council. And as I stated earlier, this is the most money in the history of Beaumont. We spent the sewer and drainage, and we continue to work so and do so, and implement the plan that we put in progress.
And Councilman Samuel, your response.
Yes, we have an aging infrastructure system as far as our water system. We will continually strive for excellence in that area. However, we have to be aware of modern technology, the things that are coming on the scene that helps, just like real-time crime. We have, there's a real-time water surveillance system. So we should be able to take advantage of the new technologies and help us in maintaining adequate water for our citizens.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, our next set of questions have to do with public safety. Let's start off with violent crime in Beaumont. That can be a moving target, and so far this year, we have had three fatal shootings in the city. Limits, investments, like the Real-Time Crime Center, have played a high-profile role in fighting violent crime. How would you assess its effectiveness, and what additional measures would you propose to improve safety in Beaumont? We're starting off with Mr. Navoe on this question.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of serving on the Police Advisory Committee, call it the Citizens Advisory Committee, for the past two years, went through Citizens Police Academy, and I've sat in these meetings month after month. And ever since the implementation of the Real-Time Crime Center, it has dropped significantly the crime rate, and also the apprehension of suspects. There was an article put out on Facebook by the Beaumont Police Department just this morning that I read, and it's a fact that they have caught 100% of the murder suspects from last year due to, you know, the Real-Time Crime Center. So we are making strides in the city, and the other issue would be youth crime. So they know that they're going to get away with it half the time, or they're just going to get a slap on the wrist. So a lot of the crime that's being done is by the youth, and there's only 12 beds in the youth facility, so it's always overloaded, and a lot of them get turned right back out onto their parents' home and parents' custody, and they just continue the cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Navoe. Councilman Turner, your response to this question.
I think one of the most significant things when answering this question is, do we actually understand the demographics of the community that we actually serve? One thing about Beaumont, we have an area where it's a lot of poverty. There's a lot of families who are struggling. But most important, there's a lot of parents who are working multiple jobs trying to take care of their kids. I think the Real-Time Crime Center was a great, significant improvement. Our solve rate has improved drastically, but the issue isn't our solve rate. The issue is preventing crime. What I would propose is, I'm the liaison for the youth council. A lot of us can come with all kinds of ideas how to resolve crime, but it takes the community working together. And since most of the crime is taking place in our younger demographics, I want to task the youth council with coming up with a concept of, what are some things that they feel like can be done better to reduce crime in the city of Beaumont? What are some things that they feel can be implemented? What are some programs and procedures that they would like to see that would help get the attention of some of these younger people that are committing these crimes?
Councilman Samuel, your response to this question.
I think we have to continue to be aware of what's technology that can assist us. And I believe we must continue to use some of the old things along with the new. So we have to use community policing. We have to have officers that are on the street, officers that know the neighborhoods. But we have to use the modern technology, like shots fired, to assist with it. We have to implement our camera systems throughout our city, both in residential cameras as well as commercial cameras. So working together doing these things, we believe these systems can work, and we have to continue to work with that and look at the technology that's available to help us do better.
Mr. Williams, you'll be the last one answering this question. What's the effectiveness of the Real-Time Crime Center, and any additional measures to make, improve public safety?
Yeah, I think the Real-Time Crime Center is a great tool for, you know, apprehension or catching somebody who's already committed a crime, but, you know, it's not going to prevent someone from committing a crime. And, you know, I agree with what Councilman Turner said. A lot of crime is rooted in poverty. You know, people feel like that's a route that they have to take to survive. And so, you know, finding ways to, you know, let these young people or young adults find a different way of life to where they know that that's, that there is another option, that they can find a job and provide for a family, and this is a city where they can live within and be productive, is the best path forward, in my opinion, for prevention. You know, letting these people know that there is another option.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, let's move on as we continue to talk about public safety. Given the increase in youth-involved violent crime in Beaumont, do you support expanding community-led anti-violence initiatives? And just to be clear, we're not talking about police or law enforcement-led, but community-led initiatives, such as mentorship programs and intervention strategies? And if you do support these types of strategies, what specific actions would you take as a councilmember to support and/or even fund these efforts? We're going to start with Councilman Turner on this one.
That's a great question, Mark. I'm glad you brought that up, because the city of Beaumont this year implemented a better program for our recreational department. We've tasked the recreational department, we're creating more programs for our youth, like the Youth Basketball League, where it's a league that citizens can play in, and parents can come watch their kids play completely for free. Some parents can't afford to pay for their kids to travel, or let alone come watch their kids play. The youth swim team, we have a youth swim team in the city of Beaumont. Now, kids from all over the city can participate in the swim team. But one of the things I'm most proud of is now in our libraries, we have Khan Academy. So in all our libraries, you can go to the libraries and get on our computers and work on your literacy programs for absolutely free. But it takes our community working together. I lead some of these private organizations that do youth initiatives, and I got youth summer camps, and I do all kinds of things for kids, and I'm looking forward to working with other people who will continue to do things that is youth-driven.
Okay. Going over to Councilman Samuel, what's your thoughts on this question?
I believe we have to continue to do work with other organizations such as BISD. We have to provide those things, and we've been providing programs that assist with our young people, whether it be in the Sterling Pruitt Center or in downtown. But I think one of the things we have not really addressed is mental health. We have to do more for mental health and training our officers to recognize those issues, and we have to put our money where our mouth is. We have to do more for helping those with mental health issues, particularly in our young people.
Okay. Mr. Williams, do you support community-led anti-violence initiatives? Is that something the city should be funding?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, as a citizen, as a business owner, a dad, that, you know, it starts with me and my kids, and then those that are around me, and how many people can I impact and be a good role model or mentor? And, you know, then if elected, it's important that you carry those same values and principles over. And, you know, I am for, you know, anything that we can do as a city to help kids understand what they're capable of, what's possible, and let them know that Beaumont can be a place that they can live and grow. And, you know, we have a bond issue coming up. It'll be on the ballot, and, you know, as a member of that committee, that's, things like that can be put on the ballot to let the voters decide if they think that that's something they want to see the city get involved in.
Yeah, Mr. Navoe, you'll be the last one on this question.
I think the greatest deterrent to youth crime is leadership, strong role models, and that comes from several different, you know, areas. It can come from BISD, churches, nonprofits. So the youth programs that are in place around town are making a significant impact, and so I do want to give them the, you know, the credibility and the props for, you know, taking the initiative doing that. I mean, we've had dads on deck that I've heard was supposed to start in the schools. I haven't heard anything further about it. That would be a great initiative. YMCA, I spoke with the CEO and director, and they've offered to work with the Sterling Pruitt Center to bring extra after-school programs, summer camps, and all learning initiatives to the Sterling Pruitt Center that they don't already have, so free charge. I'll be working with them to hopefully get that implemented with council's approval. I have a charity Make-Ins Meet, and we help single-parent families, and they are a significant part of our community.
Okay. Moving on to the roads. Beaumont has experienced a concerning number of serious and fatal accidents involving both cars and people on the roads. What specific strategies would you advocate for to enhance road safety, and how would you collaborate with state agencies like Tech dot and local organizations to implement these measures effectively? We're going to start with Councilman Samuel on this one.
I believe the increase that we've seen is a result of the work that's being done around the city. I think we have to continue to make sure that these systems, our transportation systems, are pre-planned, so our citizens know where the work is going to be done, where they're spending most time, and where is there the most danger. So I believe it's just giving more notice about the work, and that would assist in making our transportation system safer across the city.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I mean, I think it comes down to just communication and collaboration with Tech dot. You know, if all this road construction is going on, it's important that the city knows the plan, that the people that travel the roads know the plan. And, you know, it's important that if citizens or councilmembers see a problem area or notice an increase in accidents, or, you know, even fatalities that we've seen over the last couple of months, that we bring those concerns to Tech dot or the appropriate parties and try to address the root cause of it and go from there.
Mr. Navoe.
I'm the president of Collet Area and Neighbors Association, and I've reached out to Tech dot a couple of days ago, and be having the engineer of Tech dot come in to our Thursday, first of the month meeting, 6:30 at First Christian Church. Anyone's welcome to join, ask questions. And so they're going to go over the roughly five-year project of the Highway 69, I think, corridor here that's going to be revamped, and, you know, the taking down of the Moore and Meyer Bridge and Laurel Underpass, and where the exit ramps are going to be and all. I believe that we do need adequate lighting. We've had a couple of mental health issues where obviously someone was laying in the road and got hit. There was an incident that happened with, you know, a dog out in the road, and the lady went out there to help and got hit, and it's likely due to inadequate lighting, you know, in the kind of outskirts of a major drive in 105. We don't have enough lighting out there.
And Councilman Turner, you'll be the last one on this question.
I think basically educating the community on the transparency on how a transportation system works. A lot of people may not know that our freeways and our feeder roads are Tech dot projects, or maybe our major thoroughfares like Highway 90 and Highway 105 are Tech dot projects. It's important that our citizens know who to speak to when there's an issue. And I think it's extremely important, like RFD Road on 105, there's no light there, and the traffic is currently increasing. I think we need to do a better job collaborating with the city and Tech dot. When I first got on council, we weren't doing those collaborations, but now, quarterly, Tech dot comes to the city council meetings and does a meeting. I think we need more town halls. I think the community needs to have feedback on how they want our freeway, freeways and intersections to look. And me personally, I think it needs to be more accountability on Tech dot. I think they can do a better job in how they communicate and how they take care of our feeder roads and the way our city looks off of our freeways.
We've certainly all been hearing a lot about that recently. Okay, our next question, we're going to start off with Mr. Williams, and this is also about road conditions. Considering the wear and tear on roads from heavy commercial traffic throughout the city and other issues like that, what strategies would you implement to maintain and improve road safety and infrastructure integrity, talking about the road conditions themselves? Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, traffic on roads within our city is, you know, that's what they're used for. Cars go up and down them every day, and so, you know, some parts of town have more traffic, some see less, and so it's important to know where these thoroughfares are being used more than others, and make sure that the proper maintenance and upkeep is addressed. And, you know, I think that, you know, keeping our roads safe and drivable, but there are some parts of town, I've driven quite a bit over the last six months, that are, you know, you feel like you're going to blow your tire out driving down them. So I just think that it comes down to, if you see something, you say something, and you address it, and get it accounted for and get it fixed.
Mr. Navoe, same question.
I've noticed on the 69 corridor, I have these heavy overloaded dump trucks and rock trucks that are just constantly cruising 80, 90 miles an hour through there, dropping dirt clogs and rocks and stuff that beat up my car every time I bring my son to school down towards, you know, Port Arthur. And it needs, they need to slow down, number one, and it would be nice if they stayed in the right lane to where other traffic can get around them safely. But we do have an issue with these overloaded vehicles, heavy load vehicles that are wearing out the highways, and I don't think that they, that there's any consideration taken into, you know, enforcement of getting the vehicles, those larger vehicles to stay off into the right lane, so maybe just keep the wear down to at least the right lane instead of both or, you know, all traffic lanes.
Would that be working with DPS, for instance, to patrol more, or working with Tech dot more?
I would say, you know, that's Sheriff Department and DPS that would maintain that area, because it's in between the city limits of New Orleans and Beaumont, where I'm talking about.
All right. Councilman Turner.
That's a great question. I actually proposed impact fees for these heavier trucks and manufacturers that are actually destroying the roads that were not designated for them. I proposed that to the council for these type of industries, and that actually didn't pass. So I hope that I can get some councilmembers in the past that want to hold some of these businesses accountable for how they're taking care of our roads. Another thing that I'm looking for again is just accountability with Tech dot. It's kind of unfortunate as you exit the freeways over there by Main Event, as you exit the freeways over there by Washington Boulevard, you almost have to duck and dodge certain areas. We report it, and they patch it, but we need to make sure we're more communitive and hold them more accountable on actually fixing these roads to the maintenance and upkeep that we have the expectation of. I think our community deserves good, safe roads, and you look at Washington Boulevard, you look at McNohey, you look at College Street, the city's doing a great job, but we need to hold Tech dot more accountable.
Okay. And closing us out on the question of road conditions is Councilman Samuel.
Well, I don't like to be the one that points fingers, so I'll say, we have to do a better job. Tech dot has to do a better job. There's technology out there that helps us with prevention. We have to take advantage of the technology that exists, so that we will be able to pre- see these problems before they actually occur, and our ongoing maintenance would provide us an opportunity to deal with those issues. But I think it's by being aware of the technology that exists that will help us to be preventive and prevent the de-escalation of the condition of our roads. So that's what we have to do, and I believe Tech dot can do a better job of working with us, but we'll continue to work together.
Okay. Moving on to the upcoming bond issue that we may be having, and Mr. Navoe's going to be the first one to start with this one. All right, this fall, Beaumont, you could have its first bond election in 42 years with a property tax increase. This could fund many of the proposed investments outlined in the city's $800 million community investment plan, including enhancements to the park system, recreation, municipal buildings and facilities, water and sewage, streets and drainage. It's a whole wide range of things outlined there in the CIP. Will you support sending a property tax increase proposal to the voters this coming fall, and how would you engage with the community about the priority projects? What do you think about that, Mr. Navoe?
Absolutely support anything that has to do with infrastructure. I mean, you do have quality-of-life proposals on there, such as parks and things like that. Of course, you know, our youth need places to go play and have a good time, and places to take your family on Sunday to go, you know, cruise the park, let the kids play, have a picnic, all that. But we have to seriously address the fact that there are people in this city that live and pay taxes, that can't even flush their toilets when it rains, and they've been promised election cycle after election cycle that this would be taken care of. And if this is the opportunity to get it done, that's high on my priority list. I want that taken care of first before, you know, quality-of-life, you know, infrastructure plans. So that's where I stand on it, and I'm sure that the public would be behind, you know, having a small increase in their tax base to ensure that they can, you know, flush their toilets when it rains. It just has to be done.
Councilman Turner, what do you think about a potential property tax increase and sending that to the voters?
I want to make myself clear. There's no projects that have been identified that would actually go into this bond. That's the reason for the bond committee, and those people on that committee actually decide what goes into the bond. Council has not picked or decided any projects or amount. I want to make myself clear on that. The second thing is, me personally, I think we should prioritize things like our infrastructure first, but not only look at things that we could put on the bond, but also look at how we can bring revenue from issues and things that we actually do. Like if you did a hotel, that's actually revenue that'll be generated to the city of Beaumont. Like if you did a recreation center. Right now, baseball is the number-one form of tourism, youth sports in the city of Beaumont. That means heads and beds. That means people living in hotels. I think if we had a nice state-of-the-art sports complex in the city of Beaumont for youth programs and youth sports, that would bring more economic development revenue to the city, that we need more revenue in our fund balances.
Councilman Samuel, how do you feel about a potential property tax increase? Would you send that to the voters?
Well, again, I would agree with Councilmember Turner. There's been no talk about exactly what we're going to do. We have a committee that's evaluating the needs and the possibility of the bond issue. I'm very proud that we've gone several years where we've continued to lower the tax rate, and this year is no different. But we have to find ways of generating more revenue, and that is one area that we were, we would be able to utilize funds from the bond to do some of the things that's needed, such as downtown. Downtown needs development. There's a lot of money, it's going to cost, and we need to find a way to do that other than increasing taxes, but we've continued to try to maintain level tax base.
Mr. Williams, where do you stand on a potential property tax increase that could be sent to the voters as soon as this fall?
Yeah, I was at the first bond committee meeting last night. I was appointed by Councilman Taylor Nield, and, you know, first, the first thing they told us is that, given the rise in property values, that there's about $15 or $16 million in a bond that we could go out for that wouldn't even require a property tax increase. So that was good to hear. And then outside of that, I think that, you know, we listen to the people who the city has hired. They've, they've put these plans together, they've assessed- They've put these plans together, they've assessed needs, we listen to the people. There's a poll that people can go online and take at beaumontbonds.com and they can tell us what they want to see done, what do they prioritize to see done in this city. And as far as downtown development, I own a business in town and it's not downtown and I just, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you. Okay, last question here is going to be on downtown development and we're going to start off with Councilman Turner on this one and this will be the last question of this section of the forum. Downtown revitalization, that's a priority for many residents. What is your vision for downtown Beaumont and how would you attract businesses and residents to the area? Councilman Turner?
We currently have a tourist district that was recently formed in the city of Beaumont and I was one of the people who led that project. I learned about it in Washington DC and brought it to the city of Beaumont. So, with this tourist district, the property tax rate will be capped and everything above that can be used to incentivize economic development in areas that are within the tourist district. In downtown, I-10, as well as the corridors off of 69 are all within that district because it's undeveloped property that we can use to take that funding and incentivize businesses. And I think right now with the city not having an EDC, this tourist district could be a game changer when it comes to downtown development, as well as development off of the freeways. I think it's extremely important that the city of Beaumont comes with economic development tools to incentivize growth, as well as making sure we're taking care of the local businesses who also can apply for outside funding increases to fix the outside of their buildings that are already existing. We have to do a good job attracting new businesses as well as taking care of our current local businesses.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Samuel, how do you feel about downtown development?
I agree with Councilmember Turner. This tourist, with us beginning to work with the tourists for downtown development is going to be a game changer. That creates opportunities for us to co-op with other governmental entities such as Jefferson County, BISD, Lamar University, because some of them have expressed an interest in coming downtown. For example, a subsidiary campus downtown for Lamar University or LIT. So, there are tremendous opportunities and if we continue with the unity we have right now to focus on downtown, downtown hotel development conventions, we'll be able to capitalize on more conventions. So, we have to do those things. We have a natural resource that we haven't tapped on, that's the nature's river. We have to use the nature's river as a draw to get people downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel. Mr. Williams, what is your position on vision for downtown development?
Yeah, I think the tourist district is great and it sounds good, but unless people invest, unless they open up businesses within that area, then we won't see the benefits of it. And I think it's important to look at the root cause of why aren't people downtown? Why aren't people investing there currently? I think it can be argued that the homeless situation that this city is facing that has gotten out of hand, the businesses that are dealing with some of these people using the bathroom on the sidewalks and other indecent acts. I would, as a business owner, that would be a deterrent to me. I would be fearful that that would be a deterrent to customers. And with the hotel, I think it sounds good also, but with this bond issue coming up, I think it's important to also realize that Conroe recently did a hotel in the same fashion. That hotel actually lowered their credit rating.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Navo?
Been appointed to the Community Development Advisory Committee for four years and I have been working with our Economic Development Director, Christina Lowkey, for quite some time on bringing in new business, new job opportunities and growth. And I believe that we need a catalyst downtown, something large that'll bring in auxiliary business. So, I think the hotel project, downtown convention center would be that catalyst and so that they could bring in convention after convention and that's a lot of heads and beds, like AJ said, and you'd have a lot of folks go into restaurants, so new restaurants would open, you'd have more nightlife and activity there. So, I think that's the key is to get this downtown development operational or kick the ball rolling, so to speak, would be the downtown convention center and hotel project.
Okay, well, that concludes our main questions for our forum here, but before we wrap up, we'd like to end on a lighter note with a quick lightning round and just a few fun questions to help voters get to know you a little bit better outside of all this policy talk. Try to keep your answers to just one word or two and let's jump right into it and we're going to go right on down the line every time. We're not going to keep rotating like this. We'll start with Mr. Samuel. What is your favorite local restaurant?
The Grill downtown.
Carlito's, Tex-Mex.
I'd have to say the patio. I got to go with Big John, some of the best chicken in Beaumont.
All right, all right, moving on. What high school did you attend?
Beaumont High.
Lumberton High School.
New Orleans High School.
A proud graduate of Central High School in Beaumont, Texas.
Your first job?
Many years ago. Little Mexico, College Street.
Langsod and new construction for my father.
Bagging groceries at HEB. I was a cartman at Sam's right here in Beaumont, Texas. I pushed the buggies.
Buggy boy, okay, I know how that feels. Favorite park in Beaumont?
Magnolia Park.
Rogers Park.
Rogers Park, yes. Definitely the imagination station.
All right, give us one word that your friends would use to describe you.
Friend.
Bold.
Funny.
Aggressive.
All right, and last one for the lightning round, favorite local event or festival?
Juneteenth.
Southeast Texas Whiskey Festival.
Oktoberfest.
Mural Fest, Juneteenth, Fourth of July, I'm sorry, I love them all.
Well, thank you, candidates. We appreciate your thoughtful answers and your time today. Now, as we come to the end of our forum, each of you will have one minute for a closing statement and this is your chance to speak directly to the voters about why you are running and what you hope to accomplish and we're going to start in the same order. Mr. Samuel?
Leadership. I've served my community. I love Beaumont, I'm committed to Beaumont and I'm committed to see Beaumont become better. That means better streets, better policing and better homes and better relationships. Beaumont can be better, but it can only get better if we work to make it better.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I want to leave everyone with this. We get the government, we're willing to tolerate. That's not a warning, it's a challenge. If we tolerate broken promises, nothing will change. If we tolerate, you know, I'm sorry, if we tolerate, man, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. If we tolerate broken promises, nothing will change. And so, I think that it's important that we have bold leaders who are accountable and who are willing to fight for what's right, be honest with citizens and be willing to have those honest conversations and put in the work. That's the most important thing and I just want everyone to know that's what I'm willing to do and I'm excited to be a part of this and I'm ready to get to work.
Mr. Navo?
I've been a public servant to Beaumont for the past four years in multiple capacities that I've stated. I moved my company to Beaumont 10 years ago, planted roots here. My kids have gone to school here. I enjoy the people here, going out to the festivities, to the restaurants. We have a great town here and I just want to make a contribution to the city that I love. And so, I will continue to serve whether I'm elected, appointed or called. I'm just going to continue to do so because I really feel like it gives me a sense of purpose and it gives me roots here. And so, I enjoy helping the people in the community and my neighbors and friends and so I'll continue to do that in a larger capacity at large. And I think that the experience that I have working on these committees under city council have led me to the place where I am, to have the experience to start day one and start working with council to get things done that we need to get done.
And, Mr. Turner, please close us out.
Man, the Conroe Hotel, it's important that we educate the citizens on what's going on. That Conroe project, we had another consultant that was over that project that no longer is over, the hotel convention center development for the city of Beaumont. The new consultant we new have is the one who just done a successful project across from the Texas A&amp;M football field. The tourist district, we mentioned the tourist district, it's important to talk about transparency. During the first year of this tourist district, it's already generated over $360,000 of a surplus in revenue in the city of Beaumont. House Bill 5012, this is a bill where Texas has allowed the city of Beaumont to recapture the state tax for 10 years and that's a huge percentage of revenue that the state would get, instead the city's going to get. We normally get 7%, now we're going to get 7% plus the additional 6%, doubling our ROI. It's important we look at people running for office that are solution-driven. It's easy to identify the problem, but how many are going to get in there, do the research and work hard for solutions for you?
Okay, well, thank you to all the candidates. That concludes our Beaumont City Council at-large candidate forum streaming exclusively on 12 News Plus and our 12 News YouTube. We want to thank all of our candidates for their time and thoughtful responses. We especially thank you, the voters, for taking the time to learn more about the people who want to represent you. Remember, that election day is Saturday, May 3rd and early voting is April 22nd through the 29th. Your voice matters and your vote helps shape the future of Beaumont. Find all of our election coverage on 12newsnow.com.